I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming tonight. We have some city licenses that will appear there on the screen for publication. The next thing on the agenda is an appointment to the library board. We had three fantastic applicants. I'm going to nominate Tom Sewell for that spot. Tom Sewell is a CPA, and he's got a fairly extensive background in municipal finance. Said he'd really like to help out with the library, and I think since they have had, you know, a lot of difficulties with adequate funding and so forth, I think it'd be a great advantage to have him there. So I'm going to move to appoint Tom Sewell to that if I could have a second.
Seconds.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. Thank you to everyone who applied for that spot. Like I said, we had three great candidates. Next is adoption of the consent agenda. The only thing we have on there today is appropriations. Does anybody want to pull that one item off to discuss? All right. I move that we approve the consent agenda then.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing for the North Penn Revitalization District, which we adjourned from a previous meeting. So I will hereby open the public hearing. We had a few questions raised last time.
Yes, about the area adjacent to this area.
Right.
And we did find that it was in the downtown district.
Okay. That's what I remembered. Okay, any -- it is a public hearing. Anyone from the public's welcome to speak if they'd like. All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing unless you gentlemen have anything you want to discuss on it.
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
So we will close the public hearing, and then we need a motion to approve that, I believe.
I'd make a motion that we approve an ordinance adopting the North Penn Revitalization Plan and designation of a neighborhood revitalization, and authorize the mayor to sign an here and local agreement.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Did that cover it, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Wonderful. Excited about that. Okay, next we have a presentation. I'm not sure. Is that you, Dave?
No, he was going to do it, but I think he's tied up on his phone.
Okay. Yeah, it sounded like we had an emergency.
Yes. So, Mayor, I will let you -- this is what he can do.
Okay.
This is what he has to present.
All right.
To -- you guys want to join me up?
All right. Steve, how about these four come up front? Steven Newton, Chad Morando, Chris Fur, and Bryson Zimmerman. We're recognizing these four today. These firefighters responded to a medical emergency and found an individual in cardio-pulmonary arrest. Through their efforts, they were able to resuscitate the individual and transport him to appropriate medical care. This patient has fully recovered and returned back to work. So we would like to recognize these individuals for their outstanding performance of their duties. I'd also like to thank Chad and Morando, Chad Morando for 19 years of service, as this is his last day with the city. Wow. Chad will be returning to school and is working at becoming a physician?
Oh, wow. Holy Spirit.
Steve Newton, thank you so much, Steve.
Awesome. Love you.
Very much. Congratulations.
Chad, congratulations. Good luck. Man.
My wife would be so thrilled to hear this. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Fred?
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, Bryson. Congratulations on that.
Great work. Thank you.
All right. Jeff.
Yes.
I'm excited. I think it's exciting.
Item C, we have a presentation. Nope, sorry. That was item C. Sorry about that. D, consider request from Four Paws to install an electronic sign at Penn and Oak. Is that what brought Andy to the meeting?
That is why I'm here tonight, gentlemen.
Excellent.
Just tell me when the next slide's for you, okay?
Okay. Have you guys -- so I sent a PowerPoint deck a couple weeks ago to --
Kelly.
Kelly, sorry. And I don't know if you guys had a chance to review it or not. I can either walk you through that, or we can just --
Let's walk through it.
Okay. So the concept is, is to renovate the existing sign that's at the corner of Penn and Oak to this design that we've got here, to include an LED screen, so that we can tailor messages of the events that are happening in Riverside Park, as well as, you know, we've got some structure to it, and then, you know, an eye-catching peacock that we put on there as well to hopefully drive some curiosity from our younger backseat customers that travel with us. Next slide, please, Kelly.
Is it one of our live peacocks?
No, it's not. It's not live. It's not stuffed. It'll be metal.
I'm sure we'll have live ones up there occasionally.
Yeah. Who knows what we'll have up there? Sign details, just real quick. It's a two-sided LED panel that we're looking at, about 12.8 millimeter LED size. So just for some reference points, the ICC West sign is right around 16 mils. So, and then I think the one at Matt Sutherland's bank is around 10. So it's going to be kind of in between that in terms of clarity. Cabinet size is 50 by 100 inches roughly, and it'll be multicolored. So we've got some cool things going on with that. We're also going to have Wi-Fi updates with that, so that you'll be able to set it to your desktop, and someone from the park staff can key in, "Hey, we've got a football game going on. Our live concert at the Band Shell tonight, 7:00 PM. Please join us," type of stuff. We're going to -- our intentions are, and this is kind of one of the things that the city, we're going to be asking for the city's help on, we want to connect through the existing meter that's located in the mausoleum. Just we're going to run some wiring and hook it up there. So, you know, instead of having to set a new meter and all that fun stuff, just tie it into that one that's already there. And then we've also gone with Kelly's help, all through all the compliance codes with that article in section E. Anyway, nothing on that stuff. That's the details, real quick. Next slide, please. The base components. So one of the things that's kind of going to be a little bit of a trouble spot that we found is, in talking with the historical organizations, they agreed with our concept of trying to match the stonework that's outside of the cemetery, instead of replicating the cemetery wall, which is great, with the exception that it's Carthage stone in the mausoleums, which is no longer in production. Thank you for that information. The recommendation that, from the groups we've talked to, is to go with what they call a cottonwood with weathering. It should tie in nicely with that, so it won't be a complete eyesore, which is what we want to try to avoid. And then, as far as the components on the top, it's all steel with accent lighting. So that's kind of what we're going with on our design. Like I said, there's been involvement from Four Paws, the park staff. We're using career designs. Todd Bolton here in town is kind of our project manager on this thing. Worked with various folks from the city of Independence, as well as the Historical Society. Spent a lot of time with KDOT as well, trying to figure out, you know, where exactly to put this thing with right-ofways, so on and so forth, and then benchmarking other signs around town. You can see that list there. I'll just give that reading.
So KDOT has given their blessing?
KDOT is okay with it, as long as --
Amazing.
One of the interesting things that we have discovered is that with the curb cut that they did on that corner, the current sign is technically in the right-ofway, which --
It's breaking the rules.
Sorry. Found that out, so, you know, we just, we only need to move it a little bit, but they're good with it. They're supportive of that piece as well.
So there was no obstruction from traffic or anything?
There should be, you know, by moving it farther away from that curve, it actually
helps that hole, yeah.
It should fix that a little bit.
That makes it, yeah.
And when it comes to actual placement, the local engineer and, you know, probably someone from the city staff, we're all going to go out there and, you know, can a spray paint and say, "This is where it's going to go." And so that everybody's in agreement. It makes a lot more sense than having to go back through trans system to redo a bunch of designs on a clean project that happened 15 years ago that, you know, the paperwork's lost, basically. So that piece on -- one of the key -- next slide, please, there. Use cases, you know, welcome guests to the park, announce special events, so on and so on. And we can also do some promotional type of things, so it kind of ties into the Roger Brooks stuff we had several years ago. And I think one of the things, too, is, you know, alerting travelers of a nearby excursion. You know, if you've got traffic coming up and forth, you know, maybe people want to stop and have lunch. Who knows?
Right.
But, you know, give them the opportunity to turn us down, not just, you know, ignore them. But there's a thousand other use cases I'm sure we can think of, but we'll not do that tonight. Thank you. Next slide, please. So as far as my checklist comes, there's a couple things that, you know, I've already had approval from the Four Paws, the park board. I'm looking for you gentlemen to approve a couple things. One being, since we will be tying into a meter with the city, one of the things that we've uncovered is, as far as usage goes, on the other signs around town we've benchmarked, we're looking at about $1.15, $1.20 per day in electrical usage. So that's going to be hitting your balance sheet there. So that's one of the things. And then just kind of, I don't anticipate there being a bunch of ongoing maintenance. Most of the component pieces will be under warranty. We're talking stone on the base, but there might be, it might be advantageous to budget a couple hundred dollars a year in case there is something wrong with the electrical panel. You have to have blanketship come out, or some electrician come out and check it, those types of things. The other items should be under warranty and covered in there. So those are the things I'm kind of asking the commission for. And then there's one thing that, with your approval, I'm going to continue to pursue it with the Highway Beautification Act. Since that sign was established prior to 1991, if we do treat it as a upgrade or refurbishment, we may be able to bypass some of the KDOT Highway Beautification licensing and annual fees, basically is what that boils down to. Or we may just say, you know what, let's bite the bullet and pay another $300 and be done with it. So those are some of the things that, but I'm looking for some guidance on.
Is that a one-time fee, Andy?
There's a one-time, one-time fee of $2.50 for that sign, and then because it's, there's a specific classification because it's a municipality, I think there's also a one-time fee of a licensing, like 50 bucks, and then after that, it's just good to go. We also get to put one of those ugly green signs on it, too. Yeah, with the numbers. But that's kind of it. You know, we'll work through the permitting and so on.
Wait, what was that part again?
There's a green sign with like a six-digit number that you're supposed to have on those things, because it's on 75.
Can we put it on the back side?
Or on the top, on the side?
Has to be seen from the highway.
One side so you can't see it.
We can figure out a placement on that, but that's kind of one of the things that we're trying to step through. And that point, there's some dimensions for you at the end, if anyone really wanted to dial into that piece of it, but any -- oh, and the last piece, too, is because this would be considered, you know, kind of city property, you know, for, you know, acts of God and this kind of thing. I think it would fall underneath the city's liability, since it is on city property. So from an insurance standpoint, just something to consider.
Is that high enough to be seen over the wall when you're coming from the north?
Yep.
That's a good question.
Yep.
That's beautiful.
Yep.
Is it going to sit perpendicular to Penn Avenue or parallel?
Where's the angle?
I've got an aerial. You want me to bring you that?
I mean, I was kind of going to wait for that until we go out there and actually figure out the exact location that all parties kind of agree upon, and then kind of look at it from, what's the best way to view it? You know, ideally, we were hoping to put it actually at an angle like this, that it would be at a V. Either way, so it's kind of, what can we actually do with it or not, being how it is, a two-sided LED panel box. So that's one of the things we want to do. We want to make sure it's seen for sure, Leonard, to your question, by both sides, how it actually sits on there and then looks intentional.
If somebody's already on Oak, they probably already head into the park, aren't they?
Uh, yeah. Or they just drove by, yeah.
It'll be red from both sides, right?
Right, right. The target market is really on 75. Right.
So it'll be fairly close to where the old sign was, back a little, so that it's not on the right-ofway, but that general area.
Right, outside of the road. Yep, yep.
The maintenance of the display, is Four Paws going to kind of keep?
The text and the?
For replacement or any of that. Will that become total city property, or will Four Paws still?
The intention is to turn it over to the city.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, 15 years from now, when the LEDs start going out.
It's Barb's problem.
It's Barb's problem, yeah. Yeah. She's got --
Whatever.
Yeah. So, you know, the blocks should stay there, you know, they should last forever. You know, there might be, in that same 10- to 15-year time period, some fading that happens on the artwork, but, you know, that kind of stuff is down the road a ways, and so there's.
What's the warranty period on it?
On the LEDs, there's like two different tiers you get.
Yeah, there's two tiers.
Yeah, I think the shortest one is a 60-month, five years on the panel, and I think we could also investigate or talk to them about an extended warranty if we were to pursue that. But I doubt they're going to want to go, you know, indefinitely.
Right.
Wish they would, yeah. That's what we want to do, and we'd like to try to get it completed in time for a park opening on the 9th of, or the 8th of April next year.
Is that even remotely feasible?
It's going to depend, I think, on the weather next spring, because we wouldn't want to be messing with mortar and concrete and all that fun stuff in cold.
Yeah.
See, the sign will be available, it'll be, like you're saying.
It's getting the substructure put in there, yeah. But, you know, because, you know, because the boxes, you know, it's just mounting the box on top of the pedestal once it's built, and tiring in the wire and the stuff, I mean, it'll go pretty fast once we get the base built.
And the park board's okay with it, you said?
Park board's okay with it, yeah.
So Barb's okay with it?
Well, it'd be a nice addition.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a good way to attract, well, let people know it's coming through town, like you're saying, that.
It's easy to miss.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's, when you think about all of the activities that happen up there, I mean, there's, you know, and all the venues that we have, it's a great way to market those things.
I think it's.
And also to kind of welcome some guests, you know. One of the things that we've heard anecdotally through the grapevine is, you know, we had the Lewisburg folks were down for the football game, and, you know, they couldn't find where it was at, believe it or not. So, you know, they don't come down here, they're not in the league, so, you know, just making people feel welcome, that type of thing.
Right.
Yeah. That's what I am here to ask of and discuss, and, you know, with your permission to pursue this more.
Gentlemen, any further questions?
One, in this being funded and constructed by Four Paws, as we make a motion, do we need to accept it as a donation to the city to become part of property? The reason I ask is, like dealing with the DAR gates of whose ownership it becomes, that we understand now, but years into the future, we need, is there some way we need to record that it's been given to the city and?
It's a donation from Four Paws to the city, in other words.
Right.
I think that makes good sense, because that always seems to come up, doesn't it?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Four Paws has done a lot of projects in the fort, and I don't think that point's ever been raised before, but it's.
This is a little different with the sign and the electronics involved with it.
Yeah, because it will need maintenance. Fred?
I'm good.
All right.
So I need to get it started.
Yeah, that's way exciting. So how do we want this motion to read?
Let me have a stab at it. I'd make a motion that we approve the request to put a sign, electronic sign at Penn and Oak with the vision, with it being turned over to the city after completion of the installation. Did I get it yet? Close enough?
Jeff's good.
Okay.
You okay with that?
I am.
All right, I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, three of them.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Art and Four Paws.
Can't wait. I have to charge you guys a late fee if you don't have it done by park opening. Okay, next on the item, on the agenda is item E. Consider partnering with Independence Community Orchard to allow city equipment and personnel to haul off old foundations. This is my item. I put this on here. Those of you that don't know, the Star Mill, which was built in between 1910 and 1911, and then was demolished in 2011, 100 years later, is now in the floodplain, and they have been unable to sell that lot. Kind of the next slide, Kelly? So again, it was demolished years ago. They've been looking for a buyer, never found one. And then I believe you got the floodplain photo next, correct? Yeah, so probably the reason nobody's eager to buy that piece of property. So they asked several months ago if they could give it to the city. We declined, and they have offered it to the city, the City Community Orchard, Independence Community Orchard, who has accepted it. So just to remind you, the Independence Community Orchard is a nonprofit organization with the goal of planting fruit trees in small orchards throughout the city, so then in a few years, we'll have a chance to pick and enjoy fresh fruit, plus, of course, trees are great for the environment. Those of you that didn't participate in the first one at 17th and Walnut one year ago, kind of the next slide, Kelly? We had twice the number of people that we had trees to plant, that we had quite a turnout there, and so the entire planting from start to finish took about 20 minutes. And everybody said they'd like to participate again, so we're very encouraged by the opportunity to do another one. This is a much bigger one, but we've already had a lot of people step up. George and Julie Isley have written us a nice check to buy all the trees for this new lot. Jeff Chubb has agreed to volunteer his time to take care of all the legal matters. Cornerstone Surveying has offered to donate their time to handle all the surveying needs. Tom Chisholm of TC Underground has volunteered his crew and heavy equipment to break up the concrete and load it into dump trucks. Now, the problem, TC Underground does not have a dump truck that will take the load. The city does. So the community orchard is not owned by the city, so we would have to give the city staff permission to use a city truck to haul off the concrete after it's broken up by Tom Chisholm's crew. So that's what I would propose, that we give permission for that to take place. Questions, gentlemen?
So where will they dispose? I mean, where will they take?
I don't know.
Fair question.
Yeah, good question, but I don't know, actually.
I think we'll take that as our.
We'll find a place for it.
Yeah. And so then that would be the city's, the sole city responsibility after that point?
To provide the trucks.
To provide the truck.
Dump truck, yeah.
Yeah. That sounds like.
And it's told by a truck to handle it.
But not handle the landfill charge or any charge of dumping.
Right, no charges, other than, other than a truck and someone to drive it.
Can we ask a question? If, if there happen to be fees for dumping it wherever it is dumped, who will cover those costs?
We, the orchard will take care of it.
The orchard will? Okay.
Any other questions?
What, what's been the city's policy in the past?
We've helped on nonprofits in a black manner. The reason we wanted to bring this up is because the mayor is, wanted, basically started this organization, so we wanted to make sure that the board was in favor of helping, simply because of his situation.
Well, when you have more people show up than you have trees.
Yeah, that was nice.
And you're suggesting that that's possibly the same scenario here, maybe even more. It sounds like it's got good community support, and I see the cost being minimal, so.
Cost is very minimal to the city.
Right.
A little wear and tear on the truck, I guess.
And, you know, the only thing I would see as a precedent, and if we're open to other nonprofit organizations to give them the same consideration.
Yeah.
Then I don't see a problem. And as long as, it kind of read initially, looking at this, it was to be used in removing the concrete, but if it's only the use of a truck to haul and dispose.
Right. Yeah, Tom Chisholm would do the heavy lifting, he said, which we appreciate very much.
I'm good with it.
All right?
I think it's a good part.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we, the city partner with the Independence Community Orchard.
Should one of us make the motion?
Sure, if you're willing.
Yeah, I'm willing.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize the use of a city dump truck to haul debris from 1,400 West Laurel to a disposal site selected by the Independence Community Orchard.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're hoping for an early spring planting of a bunch of fruit trees. All right. Item G, no, item F, sorry. Consider reviewing the condition of the following previously condemned structures. Hey, Don, how are you? Welcome. Good. So first, we got 201 East Main.
Yes, this has changed owners. This has now been deeded over to the Family of Christ Church. They are the new owners. And we have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday to meet with Mr. Anderson to go over his plan to renovate this church. We, we do have some, that roof has now collapsed, as we can see in the picture, so we have, the city has put up barricades there, and so discuss with him briefly what his plan is to take care of that, and part of it is to take down that brick wall that you see there on the addition, back to the original building, and then he has some plans to shore up the roof and then work on the inside. But we haven't had a chance to formally go over all those plans yet.
Okay.
So the plan then is, is to get a timeline for repairs and follow our.
Set a timeline for repair. According to him, he thinks it can be done within the nine months, so we'll, we'll work that out, if you're agreeable to do that.
It looks like some debris's been removed.
There has been some debris removed, but there's still a portion of that roof closer to the main building that still needs to be taken out, so.
And this is just that southeast corner?
That's that southeast corner, but to the east, where you see that wall there, that there is a portion of that roof that has collapsed as well, and needs to be taken out.
You can't see it in the picture, but that.
Can't see it in the picture, but if you're inside, you can see where it's fallen in. And I don't feel comfortable enough getting on that roof to take a picture.
Good. We appreciate that.
So there's some extensive work that needs to be done.
There is quite a bit of work that needs to be done, and so he.
Structurally, too.
Structurally, so he is going to get the services of an engineer to outline the plan of repairs and for us to go forward with that.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Do we need to take any action on this, just keep us informed?
I think we're just letting you know that we had previously considered maybe having that building tore down.
Right.
It's changed ownership, now that has taken place. And so, we're, we are working with him moving forward, and we'll continue to work with him as long as they make progress on the building.
He seems pretty gung ho to get after it.
He was hoping to be here tonight, but he had to, he has a wedding to perform, so...
Okay. All right, shall we move on to the next one? All right?
Yeah, we're good.
624 North Seventeenth.
Yes, this was a property that had been condemned, was moving towards demolition, but had not reached that point. This was sold at the tax sale. There is a new owner, it's on the agenda, because the new owner is here, and there was also a complaint from a citizen that expressed a desire to speak tonight, and I don't know if she's here or not.
Okay.
But, but I think the new owner is here, and I think he has a desire to speak to you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Charlton Smith. I am the new owner of this house. Whenever I got this house, the fence line was covered in trees. I have been over there, I've mowed the yard, and I've cleaned out the fence line, so it wouldn't be an eyesore to the neighbors. I plan on going in, remodeling the whole house, and making it my new dream home for me and my kids. I need some time to take care of this and rebuild this house the way I want it to be. Because I think, if I do that, then it will be worth more to me, and to show the neighbors that I'm willing to do whatever it takes to keep this house up.
Well, it certainly looks a lot better already, because, you can see it now.
The grass was knee-high when I started moving.
But I know, when we talked about this, the first time, the neighbors were really wanting it gone.
Right, right.
So, you're gonna be battling some...
And I've talked to all the neighbors around there, so...
Okay. So, you're willing to work with Don and create a timeline that is livable for you both, in terms of labor and finance?
Yes, sir.
And stay within the guidelines of our process?
Yes, sir, I'll do my best to do that.
Don, you've explained those?
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting set for November thirtieth to, to do an inspection and to set a timeline with him for that, so... We have briefly talked a couple times on the phone to go over the process, but we haven't, we haven't met in earnest to go over the particulars of that particular house and what it will need, but that appointment is set for Tuesday, or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
It's not currently an immediate hazard, right?
No.
Okay.
No, but there, like I say, there have been some concerns expressed by the neighbors.
Yes, I heard some of those. Sir, I'm sorry for being nosey, but have you done this kind of work before?
Actually, I do it for a living.
Okay.
I work for Rob Eisenhardt, and we are right now at the Country Club remodeling houses. There's other houses that we are doing here in town.
Great.
And he's willing to help me do whatever it takes to get this house up to code.
Thank you, I just hate to see somebody jump in if it doesn't realize what they're jumping into.
I walk through it, and the inside needs work on it, and outside's pretty good, but I think I can get it covered.
All right. Gentlemen?
Well, I'm all in favor of saving the house, if you can.
Yeah, it's kind of a cute house.
Be, yeah, I mean, I think it could be a pretty house, make a, help neighbors, you know, because, I mean, seriously, neighbors are...
Keep it on the tax roll.
Yeah. So, I, I hope you can do it. Good luck.
Yeah, definitely, so just keep us informed on that one also.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Is that in the central revitalization district?
No.
No.
All right, number three, 321 South Fourteenth.
Yes, this is one where this has been condemned. We have tried to, the owner is deceased, we have made attempts to try to contact anybody that may have any kind of connection, relatives, we have not been able to do that, we can't find anybody. I always get the wording wrong, so I tried to write it down, and I'll probably get it wrong again. We're requesting that you allow staff to set a date to get quotes for demolition.
That sounds like pretty good wording. Jen, is that wording okay with you?
It's close, yeah.
It's close?
Close.
We, we're gonna receive bids for removal.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. It's already been condemned?
Yes. So, we, we've, there has been no response to any of the letters that we've had to any of the meetings, and I think, let me read the note that we have here from Kayla. Says, she found the obituary online, he's survived by children, but through a partial search, it was shown that the children don't own property in Montgomery County, and the water department has no contacts, contacts on file with the children's name. So, we've not been able to find anybody that we could follow up with on this.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Well, I think we, in the past, we've gone through and removed these type of structures. I think we've followed through with what we've done in the past.
Yes, there's certainly precedent.
Yeah.
All right, you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we allow city staff, help me out here.
To set a date to receive bids for removal.
Yeah, that we allow city staff to receive bids for removal. Do we need to declare this dangerous and unsafe?
No, it's been condemned.
Just, okay, we're still, okay. That's the motion.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Don, thanks. Thank you, Jen, for your help. Okay. Item G, consider scheduling a work session with Trainer, Trainer regarding scope of services.
I provided some dates that Trainer was available to do a work session, so we can move forward on this. The dates that he provided were an evening session, late afternoon or evening session on Wednesday, November thirtieth, Monday, December fifth, or Thursday, December eighth. You have a commission meeting on December eighth already at 5:30, so I didn't know if maybe you wanted to meet like at four, so you didn't have to be tied up more than one evening.
I like that idea.
That was staff's suggestions.
Does that work for you? Does that work for your...
Yeah, but do we need it at four, or could we do it at five? I mean, how much time do we really need?
Well, I don't know how long it's gonna take, and you don't want to run into your other meeting, so I want to make sure you had adequate time.
Well, what we could do at five, we could stop, open the commission meeting, and then continue to complete the discussion with Trainer, then go to the items, so if we can get done in thirty minutes, that would be, be good, and it would just lap over.
Yeah, either that or even set it at 4:30, whatever you guys think.
I like the five.
I too.
Five.
All right.
December the eighth.
December eighth.
I will get that set up for you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have to get that one going.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion on that, so it's official, please?
Sure.
I'm, make a motion that we schedule a work session with Trainer HL for December eighth, 2016, at 5:00 PM.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, wonderful.
We have an additional item, and we got a letter today from the, actually, a little after four o'clock, from the State Historic Preservation Office regarding this project, and you have copies of that letter, I also have it on screen, a little hard to read there, but, anyway, I know that the, the property owner is wanting to move forward on this project, so I didn't want her to have to be delayed until the next regular commission meeting, so I talked to the city attorney about going ahead and putting it on tonight. I apologize for the late notice, but like I said, we didn't get this until after four o'clock today. And the city attorney's here, he can maybe advise what steps need to be taken.
Oh, boy. So, what, what, what steps need to be taken, Jeff?
All right, to refresh your memories, we're talking about the property at 117 North Pennsylvania Avenue, housing a dental office, Dr. Jennifer Burksins, who's here. She is doing some work on the building, and if the city is in a position where it has to issue a permit for the work, that triggers a notice requirement to the State Historic Preservation Office officer, and they can visit with the owner and either approve or disapprove, and in this situation, they had some issues, so when that happens, the property owner can ask the city commission to override the decision of the State Historic Preservation Officer, and that's what we, I would say we, the city commission did at the November ten meeting.
Or thought we did.
That's, that was the intent, anyway.
And, and to be honest, and I'm not being overly negative or critical towards the State Historic Preservation Officer, we've done eight or ten of these before in my time, and with a lot less thoroughness than the one we did a week or two ago, and never had any repercussions, but we're on TV now, so apparently they viewed us and didn't think we covered enough detail. So, my recommendation would be to take this letter that we've been sent, and to make sure we address all the questions that are raised in the letter, and Don's got some comments. And I, I think the one thing, though, this letter is wrong on is that it's, it seems to be worded so it believes. Now, I know you guys have all seen the building, I've seen it hundreds of times.
Right.
Apparently, the state feels the current exterior facade is historic. I, I don't think that's the case, I think the historic features of the building were covered up some time ago by a previous owner.
Well, most of it, I mean, the second floor on the front is still original, but the north side is clearly not.
Right, the, the north and the east, or the west, I mean.
Right, west, yeah.
And there's talk in here like, that stucco that's there now is historic, well, we're not in the southwest, these buildings weren't stucco when they were built, so...
Right, no. Clearly, there was another building there.
And I think, I think we, as we talked about before, I think that building that was north of it was raised seventy-five to seventy-eight, there was a building there before, I think there was a temporary measure to try to weatherproof that wall once that building was taken down. Well, that weatherproofing is no longer effective, and is coming off, and is allowing water to infiltrate into, into that building, so I don't think it was historic, and I don't think the board in Baton was original to the building on the east side either, so...
So, well, this makes it sound like the state thinks we didn't do our duty to review every possible alternative, that's the way I read it.
That's what they're saying.
Okay, so, that's, I mean, that's clearly not our responsibility, that's, I guess, for the owner to work out with the state or with our local Historic Building Commission. I don't see that we can take any action on this tonight.
Some of the factors that they're, they're quoting go a little bit beyond considering the, the point that the storefront is not historic, it's been modified, except above the stone, Sanson Still, Sil, not Still, that might be better, but the, the north wall has no historic significance, and the choice of materials than for a nonhistoric facade, I don't think that's the commission's or the historic society's place to require an owner to go back and put something historic that's not historic.
Yeah, it wouldn't be historic if you go back and put it there, it didn't match the history.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the EFS is a more contemporary, modern exterior finish system, it will provide your insulation to the structure that's missing on the wall now, and solves some problems, the north and the west wall.
I think one of the things they want to address is whether tuck pointing or re, reparging the north wall would be alternate methods, I think, in my opinion, they're, I, I don't think that, I think the EFS would provide a more permanent solution, the building to, the building to the south of it has the same type of surface on it now, it's just wishing to continue that and go to the north wall with that.
Well, the north wall that's exposed now is softer brick than what was exposed to the exterior. It was, interior brick were different at that time than the, the exposed brick, they weren't fired and aren't as hard a brick to withstand the weather, so tuck pointing won't solve the problem when the moisture's going through the brick. You have to seal the surface, which was the attempt with the thin masonry coating. Now, you can't go over and apply another coating to that, because now your bond is on that thin coating and not on to the masonry, so you've got a point for it to fall off. You have to look at a more permanent, some mechanical attachment to hold it in place. You know, the, the solution, you can't just purge the wall and stop the moisture.
Sure.
So...
I think in regards to the, even though they don't have a say in the matter, the local historic society did review this and approved the project. So, I think that has been discussed and approved by them on the local level, even though they don't have the approval, have any approval process for this. This is the contractor for the building owner.
Welcome.
I'm Pat McGill, I'm Suter Plastica Incorporated. The questions that he's brought up about the EFS system are all right, the wall will adhere to the old structure of the stucco, which is not original. The reason why the bricks are deteriorating, they are inside bricks instead of outside bricks, like he said, so they're not designed for weather. So, chipping that stucco off would be virtually impossible, because what would happen, the stucco would break off brick back in there, and so what you would have is a bunch of bricks with some face, ninety percent of it would be broke off from a quarter to an inch. It just wouldn't work any other way. You can't paint it and fix it, the only real way to fix it is like we have designed to do, is adhere the foam to the wall, after we get the wall adhered and sanded, we'll go back with tapcons and install them into the brick periodically here and there, and then apply a full system EFS over it. Then there won't be any other issues, I mean, we've done the same thing to both the banks on each side of it, ICC West, Budweiser, Sayers, all over town, there hadn't been one issue come up with any kind of problems. So, the system would be a good system in that application to work and have longevity for years to come, it's gonna look really good.
You said you've done the banks on both sides?
I've done both of the banks in, in town, Sayers Hardware, ICC West College, Budweiser, Beaver's Eyeglass, Five Residence, it's a good system, it's worked everywhere that we've been here, we've been in town since the early nineties, that Dr. Beaver's place, sir. So, your, your worries about the water penetration and how it's gonna go, they won't exist anymore. We'll install a new metal cap like we did at both banks and all the other projects in town, the college has a new, we've worked about there, but it'll be a real professional job, it'll be an asset to downtown.
So, it sounds like, Jeff, we can answer their objections.
They have some comments about the east side.
I, I was reading that.
Can I just read them, and you can address them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Says, are there alternative design proposals for the new storefront that would be more in keeping with traditional storefront proportions, and are there alternatives that would not cover over existing historic elements of the storefront, such as the cast iron columns? Aren't the cast iron columns already covered?
The cast iron columns and the monumental emblem at the bottom of it are in terrible condition. We are gonna restore the monumental plate at the bottom. At Lama Sean in Tulsa is a client that I've used for thirty-five years, we'll take that piece to them, and it'll come back looking as close to original as possible, and that'll depend on how deteriorated, deteriorated and, you know, beat up it is, because it has been there forever. As far as what's under the wood, it's gonna be a horrible looking brick that's been covered up, I'm assuming it's brick under it, anything that's been under there for years and years is gonna have dirt, moisture, mold, whatever, and would never come back to looking like the old brick above it, plus the amount, there's no telling what really would have to be done once you got started. The way that we're doing the project, we'll remove all the debris, address whatever issues under there need to be addressed, whether you call it historical or not, we're not gonna re-tuck point everything, but fix everything before we apply the new system over it. Down on the bottom where all the brick painters are, would be in a, a stone, a dry stacked stone. Answer to your question is, yeah, you could clean that brick up and leave it if you were gonna call that original, but she wants to put stone on the front, it's all gonna tie together and look really nice to the city when it's all said and done.
Is the brick you just mentioned original, or is it, was it added?
I think the, the brick that's on the planters was added, it's a different texture brick, it's a different color mortar, so the original job was probably done eighty, hundred years ago. The front looks to me, after working in this area for forty-five years, it might have been up there maybe fifty, forty, fifty years, someone had built it a few years after the original job was done. So, it's not original either. Whether, whatever's original that's under that wood that's been covered up for thirty years, I don't know that. But the wall on this side in the back is not original, it's covered with a seminius stucco finish because the brick was interior brick instead of exterior brick to try to create a moisture barrier, which has failed because of over time.
And the original storefront is similar to the building south, so all the, all the entrance have been modified in the sixties when the brick planter was put in, in the, in the window. What they're intending to do is to really copy the work above the storefront on the south building and extend it to their north building, and then instead of removing the brick that's not historic, put stone veneer over it.
On the first floor?
On the first floor. The second floor is gonna remain just like it is.
Just like it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, the second floor is to remain just like it is.
Yeah, which will match, which will match the building to the south.
Right, yeah.
At a later date, they might reconsider maybe cleaning that up, fixing the windows up, because they're in, the, the crown molding at the top is in horrible condition, virtually unsafe condition. It's not a good deal to leave it up there. I know that the, you know, what all the issues are, but if you just drive by there and look at it, you can see that it's about to fall down on the sidewalk. And, you know, you got seventy foot of five-foot... And, you know, you've got seventy foot of five-foot tall metal substrate up there with rotted wires and everything holding it. And it's, the, this, the north end of it within three foot is hanging like this in the wind. So, you know, something's going to have to be done with it. It's going to be virtually impossible to re- to resurface all that up there because it's, it's so old, it's rusted through and it's in terrible shape. Taking it down might destroy it. And, you know, maybe somebody can say they can rebuild it in place. How are you going to rebuild it in place without getting in redoing the channel iron and all the structure and the tie wire that holds it all together? It's all rotted, it's all rotten. So, I mean, so that may not be an issue, you know?
Yeah, I think the, I think the, the cornice is different issue that it comes under more preserving the historic character, which would be, have to be addressed at a later date of either getting duplicate metal, uh, panels fabricated or...
I've got ahold of the, uh, people that developed, built that piece. It's on that plaque down there. I haven't got any response from them yet, just to see what, you know, it would take to get a new one and all. The, the owners haven't decided to do that. That's just something that I was doing in case they decided to, that I could say, here's what it is. But we haven't been able to get answers yet because it's so old. I mean, you know, it's, I don't even know if these brothers are still in business. My wife's been trying to get ahold of them on the computer. We found their issue, but we have no answer. That's been over three weeks. But the plaque on the bottom, I'm pretty sure that I can get restored. I feel good that it's going to come back and say something. It's not completely rotted. It's, it's in bad shape, but, I mean, I think something will come back of it. I'll reinstall it on the corner there where it goes. So, basically, what you're getting here is you've got a real choice. Here's what it really boils down to. You've got a customer that's got an office right there that has water and ice in penetration into their office every time there's a rain over a few minutes long. And when there's a rain for two or three days long, water coming in. It's a dental office. You've got it running wa- ruining walls and floors. And there's not really another way to fix it than what I'm proposing, other than the fact that if I dig a footing in the parking lot and build a new brick wall and I can put a cap over that just so that it looks brick, which would be virtually impossible. She don't own that property. It'd cost a fortune to tear that out and put that on there. So, I guess, uh, you know, she doesn't really have a choice. It's, it's in y'all's hands. They need to get this done before they have any more damage and stuff happen. I mean, there could be, water could get in those bricks and freeze and cause those panels to come down. So, there's an issue of safety on the front and an issue of safety on this side at the least, the size of water penetration into the dental office.
Okay. If you look at your letter, there are four areas they want you to discuss, and I think we've pretty much covered them. Technical issues, we've done a good job of addressing the technical issues. Don, is there anything?
No.
The design issues, it's been pointed out that the, the east side, which is the front, part of the influence there is to tie it into the building to the south so that it looks consistent.
That's, that's our basic idea. We won't know how that'll work out until we get it torn off and rebuilt. But that's the basic idea is to blend those in similar and then drop down below with the new stone and the planter looks and then start the, uh, EPHAS system at the edges and wrap around the corner and try to keep the front of it all like it was or like it is now.
And the other factor is the project's relationship to the community-wide plan, if any. I guess you could say it's in the historic downtown district and it's consistent with the buildings that surround it. I don't know what you're saying there. And economic issues, he's explained that if, to do it truly historic and maybe put up a separate brick wall would be cost prohibitive. I think some of the ideas that are put forth as alternatives seem to be cost prohibitive.
The cost to go back original with all the front and the side would supersede the cost of the job by two and a half to three times minimum to the customer. If she spends fifty or a hundred thousand now, he's going to spend two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand to do that. It's going to erupt business. It's going to create all kinds of issues and down, you're going to have all kinds of equipment in there. You're going to have someone come in and dig footings in existing parking lot that I don't even think they own. I think the bank owns it. I don't know. They may have a little bit of, but, I mean, it would be, she would be better off to abandon the building and go somewhere else.
Well, the only, the only historic part of value is the east facade. And the only thing that's still preserved is the second floor from the, what would have been the transom level up. And their intent is to maintain that and all we're, you know, the, the lower part, we're not disrupting anything beyond where it is or if we approve this, it won't modify anything to the point that it couldn't come back at a later day and both sides be converted back to the original design. Nothing is being modified that in the future if the south, and, and they, they need to be together. The building is, reads as one building, the second floor. And, you know, to, to try and put a storefront that was correct for when the building was built now on the north, you don't have, you've got to drive it or an EPHAS transom panel above the entrance. So, you know, logic now, I think, is continue the design above the transom panel like on the south building to, to this structure.
I just don't have any sense that we're going to meet the state's requirements here. I mean, we already, we've already had this discussion. We all agree this was a good plan and we approved it. So, now the state is saying they don't accept our approval of the plan. So, I'm not, it's not clear to me what we need to do to get the state to approve it.
What are our next steps?
Yeah.
Or is there a next step?
I interpreted the letter that we received at four o'clock today as saying that we didn't have a thorough enough discussion at the previous meeting.
So, we've had a thorough discussion?
I think if you have a thorough discussion and still agree that you want to override that, that we, we criteria that...
So, it will go back to them again?
Yes.
And we'll say we've had a more thorough discussion and we still like the plan?
And we can let the contractor store it.
Yeah, if you override it, you could, you could do it now. You, you agree.
We already voted to do that.
I'd say that was what we did in November ten.
We'd have to wait a time period in the state.
We'd give them another notification.
Sean, do you have any insight on this? You've been on that committee a long time.
Uh, I mean, we, we are required to give them the, the time to respond back and you have to consider all the alternatives. If you, if you consider that, if you, if you're to see one, my opinion, uh, I think you go through, go through the process and notify them that, you know, you, you consider that, give them, give them time to respond back to you and...
Try again.
...you forward after that.
So, since he wasn't on the mic and so if they're going to look at YouTube and watch this, he's on the committee that studied this, the local historic committee.
Correct.
And it approved the project.
Right.
He's saying that we consider all the relevant factors. And I, I believe he has two. I think you're free to make them, if you want to, make a motion that based on the, all, all the relevant factors, there is no feasible or prudent alternative to the proposal and that it concludes all possible planning to minimize harm to the property.
Is that a motion?
Not for me.
Then we would get the written portion of the minutes for that to the state Historical Society with our, with the letter and for them to review and respond back to us.
And they seem to say that they wanted, says, "We will need to see in writing how the commission considered all relevant factors and discussed feasible and prudent alternatives." So, I don't know that it has to be in the minutes or if Don can also send a cover letter and try and summarize it also, but...
Yeah, we can summarize, but you've discussed this and sent this...
And send them a copy of the video.
I think they know how to get that.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Mayor, I would recommend you actually, Don, write up what the, of the recommendation of the contractor was, the petition to you here in the meeting today to the state so then that they have something, as they said, in writing and avoid them reviewing everything on YouTube and the jar.
Right.
That process. So, that way they, that way they're, that way you're covering that base is the same that, you know, that you give it to them in writing.
You good with that, Don?
Yes.
Just one more thing for Donna did.
Yeah.
I have nothing planned for tomorrow.
Or Thursday. I bet you have free time Thursday. All right, um, so, did you get that motion that...
I got part of it.
That Jeff made.
That, so I, what I got from you, Jeff, was based on all relevant factors, there is no feasible alternative.
No feasible or prudent alternative to the proposal.
That's economically viable.
Correct. And that the proposal includes all possible planning to minimize harm to the property.
Oh, got it.
I'd make that motion. Or second it.
Whichever.
Well, I don't care. Just do it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Let's just do it here, this...
Yeah. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. See if it'll fly through the next time. Okay, um, next we have reports. Is there any other agenda items we need to add before we go to reports?
Mickey, do we need to add an agenda item?
Uh, yes. Regarding KDHE here.
Uh, we were in discussion all day today about the water situation in regard to the, uh, issue at our neighboring community. And we issued a, a, a release, uh, what, about four o'clock, which was approved by the powers that be. And after that, I, during the first part of this meeting, I was out in the, the lobby talking to Ca- Kathy Tucker Vogel. She's the section chief of the Public Water Supply in the Bureau of Water, Division of Environment, KDHE. And number one, they are not, uh, ordering us to do anything, but they are recommending that we, uh, shut down the intake at four AM tomorrow morning, just as a very much of a precautionary measure. Uh, and that is their recommendation. Uh, we can go about twenty-four hours because we have anticipated possible problem in this area. So, we have got every, all of our, our tanks and everything full. We can go twenty-four hours without affecting, uh, the water supply significantly.
Will that be time for them to be satisfied that any...
There's no guarantee. They are doing tests. They hope to get those, some tests back by tomorrow in which they would either say that there's a problem and you need to keep the plant closed. They are, uh, they've said they would help us as far as providing water. Um, but, uh...
There was no spill into the river, right?
We've had, we've had various reports on that. I wouldn't want to comment.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Uh, there's been all kinds of rumors, even from the, uh, KDHE and EPA, there's been all kinds of rumors. But what we think we know is that it won't be here until four AM tomorrow morning. I've talked to, one of the calls I got was from the city manager over at Coffeyville. They have already approved shutting down their plant, their water plant at seven AM tomorrow morning, which is when they're anticipating it to be there. I would, uh, recommend that, uh, we do that at four AM and that we declare a water emergency, do the resolution and everything to, uh, go in a, in emergency mode. But the decision is the boards.
What does, uh, emergency mode mean exactly?
It means that we, we, uh, basically shut down the businesses that use high water users. Uh, we rationed, go into a high state of, uh, uh, rationing where people are not to use water except for, uh, the, the things they have to have it for.
What businesses are big water users?
Car washes are probably the big one that affects. And, uh, when we've had the drought before, we had them shut down for some time and then we came back with, uh, a way to let them stay open because it was, it was the drought and it wasn't, is an emergency like this is. This is a, could be a dire emergency if those chemicals are something bad. They have, they really don't know yet. They do have a list and, uh, I think it's more of, of, of the, the, what the dilution is rather than what they are. Because, you know, some of those chemicals are in all the water to, to a very minor extent.
Yeah.
But, um, it's up to the board, but I would recommend that we, we, uh, exert the safety precautions and do that. And, uh, we will find out tomorrow sometime what they find out about the chemicals and then we can go from there. We may very well have to have another meeting.
So, our city staff has alertly filled all our storage tanks?
Yes.
So, we have plenty of water to get through twenty-four hours if we don't?
That's my understanding. Terry's here. Terry, is that accurate?
If we go into rationing, we can go...
All right. Terry, Terry, can you?
We go into conservation mode, we, we can go twenty-four easily.
And that's car washes essentially? We're not asking to shut down standard motor products or something like that?
Sprinkler systems, lawn water, uh, lawn watering, that type of things need to be stopped.
Okay.
Um, if we go through to tomorrow evening and it looks like we're going to, it's just is going to go further, then, uh, we may have to go more severe than that. Uh, tomorrow, we're going to be working with the state to get in place what we will need for a bare minimum amount. They will make provisions to have water delivered to us to provide that, so...
When you say water delivered, you're talking about bottled water or are you talking about?
Trucked water, tankers where we can keep our distribution system working. Uh, the thing people need to understand, if we go to water rationing and they ignore it, our system drops below twenty PSI, we automatically go to a boil order.
Right.
And then, there's all kinds of things that have to be done with that. So, uh, people really need to, to listen to what we're telling them and conserve.
Yeah.
The, the issues are that, you know, if we don't do it and the chemicals are to a, to a degree that it affects our, our facilities, we could be looking at a long, uh, period of time, just like our neighboring community's going to be a long time.
Right. Right now, we don't know if there are any chemicals at all. We're just being, taking a precaution.
We're a bonus of caution. But I would recommend that you do it and, and approve the emergency measures and then we look at the possibility of emergency meeting tomorrow to make, to decide whether you really want to continue it or, or stop it. Uh, but I would, uh, exert the caution now as a precaution.
So, what I heard was car washes and lawn watering. That's, that's what we're proposing right now? Not, not shutting down restaurants or...
I think we have a pre-existing plan, policy, resolution ordinance or something stemming from oh-seven that if you adopt the emergency, it'll, it's already tells you what it affects.
I'm not familiar with that, so...
Right. We have, we have those plans in place. I don't have it with me. Um, we didn't find out. I just received a phone call on the way up to this meeting and that day. So, uh, but like, uh, I was just reminded, if we do have a large fire, we could deplete that water in a number of hours.
Quickly.
So, uh, we have to be very careful what we do.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Good point. Okay.
Car washes and lawn watering this time of year, isn't going to be a significant...
Right.
I, I don't think that's a, a big issue this time of year. You may see some, but, uh...
That's why I was trying to get a sense of whether we're going to ask restaurants to close or industry.
Schools, all the schools are closed down now for the holidays.
They're done.
A lot of businesses are shutting down for holidays.
Okay.
But, uh...
All right. So, how do we want to word this motion, just to implement?
To pass the emergency conservation, uh, uh, resolution. And, uh, we can stay in touch. We may have to have an emergency meeting tomorrow by phone, uh, to see where we go from here. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll find out tomorrow that the, uh, the chemicals are so diluted that it won't be a problem and we can go ahead and restart the, uh, facility.
You can make that motion.
Don't say it, Leonard. Don't say it.
No, you're the mayor. You need to make that motion.
You're going to make me blush. Okay. So, we want to make a motion to implement the emergency water conservation plan?
Yeah, the resolution.
Resolution? To pass an emergency water conservation resolution? Come on, Leonard, you know you want to say it.
I think you just take a motion to declare, you know, an emergency.
Okay.
Staff will implement the pre-existing...
All right. We have a plan in place. Okay.
Could you send us copies of that plan so we maybe know what?
All right.[1793.21] I will so move.
Second.
Good enough, Jen?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Come on, Leonard, say it. All right.
Too late.
Thanks, everyone. All right. So we will be conserving water for the next 24 hours. Okay. Update on city projects.
You have some paperwork on some things, updates. We applied for the aerial fire truck grant. Kelly Aerospace has requested that if we do the demolition, they will do some renovation at the round top. And I've got a couple of proposals. And I plan on doing that demolition so that they can get started with that, those improvements.
These are the ones we already approved earlier?
No, these are not the ones you approved. What you approved before was the heater and the panels. But this is a request they have made that if we will do these, if we'll do the demolition and it's facilities that are, that need to be removed. I mean, as Sean can attest.
Sean, would you attest?
Even if, even if they weren't going to improve it, it's not a bad thing to have that junk removed.
I'll attest that the space, most politely put a dump in the back room area. And cleaning it out would probably be a huge benefit for that building. They're basically just taking it down to the walls. It's an interesting space back there, because the majority of the walls, you know, built in World War II, so they're all, they're all angle frame walls with corrugated metal. So all the, all the walls are load, all the walls are load bearing, so we can't blow all the walls out. But they're gonna go ahead and take all the finishes that they can take out of the space out and, you know, make the electrical safe and whatnot and go to that, go to that extent at this point in time.
So they're basically asking us to partner with them and we'll, we'll do the demolition, they'll do the remodel?
Ours will be about 10,000, as you see there. They are estimating their work will be, what, 35,000 to 40,000?
Yeah, at this point, they really haven't, they really haven't nailed down on what their full extended scope of work is on it, to what level?
They didn't want to do the planning until we got the demolition done. And then we also had, we need to update on apparatus bay. The contract was bid by a contractor that won the bid with site, site development at our cost. And Sean, you might explain where we've come from then.
What they, they excluded site work, is that they pointed in their, in their con, in their bid, which was assumed to be just that neat, that would be is site grading around, around the building and whatnot. And to be able to build a building, you need to have, be able to do a pad. And come to find out, after everybody, things approved, no, you're gonna do, you're gonna do the pad, well, we're not gonna be able to do the pad for the building. So we negotiated quickly with them, because we had to order the structure to get it done on time, in a way to get the pad built without causing there to be any additional cost to the, to the project. Doing so, we removed a couple, a couple items. We got rid of the cord reels out of the project quickly, because that was about a $7,000 to $10,000 number. And then we did some other modifications, didn't do the LED lights in a few other areas on the project. Can't quite remember everything off the top of my head. I thought I grabbed that paper, but I didn't. So, so we did that negotiation. And then we subsequently moved the building to take advantage of the existing entrance on the site. So, because we didn't accept the concrete entrance that was an alternate in, on the bid form. So we wanted to try to avoid, you know, coming back and asking to do the additional concrete work. So we moved the building. And doing that, it causes the, move the building further back on the side to an area where it was, basically required more, more, more fill material. So we had to add some more fill material to the project.
So, we're talking about a couple of different subjects here, basically.
Yes.
I mean, we want...
This is just a report.
Yeah, just a report.
Okay, we don't need to approve this?
Not unless you have, have, want to.
Okay. Yeah, the Kelly Aerospace deal, I mean, if you want to approve that, because I can get, I could have.
I don't think they have to, though. I can do that.
Okay. However...
Okay, sorry.
What was our lease agreement? You know, I, I guess I'm seeing, becoming consistent that we, we talk about some remodeling on the hangar. We agreed to some costs with a contingency for heaters to be replaced. Then we come back and now looking at an additional $9,000 and, and additional, I assume there's architect and some engineering fees there. We, we approve a temporary building and we find out that site development wasn't included, the drives weren't included, electrical, we're paying an electrician to do electrical work that we're hurrying in to get things done. And now we come up that we're continually spending money that we don't know at the start. You know, this, you know, I, I guess, I don't see that as the way we should be doing business, but where are the money coming from? You know, we just continued to drain a project. You build an apparatus bay and you don't include the drives? You know, we're told this is a building. We don't have, you know, we look at our appropriations, we approved $6,000 for electrical that wasn't included in the apparatus bay. You know, and it's given as a, a total project. That's the concept I got. This is turnkey, this is it. And now, you know, where is it? What is the cost for the temporary building? How many more costs are we gonna have for the hangar coming up? You know, when do we get a full, a full cost of a project? And then what's our lease agreement with them? Was it for remodeling? Did we do it? Or is it not? But, you know, there's, there's gotta be some way that we can set a budget, because is this money, and it's been spent? Then if we budget projects and things we have to do, and now we're spending money that wasn't included in the budget on items, then what are we not gonna get done? And at a point, there comes to be something that we're gonna have to neglect, things that we needed to do, or we run out of money.
Well, on the hangar, the agreement was that they would lease it and, and pay a percentage of those initial costs. The panels, the painting, they paid for that, $13,827, I believe it was. $13,827. This is just a request that they have said that if we would demolish the stuff, they would improve the building. We don't have to do this. If, that's the reason I brought it up before we approved it. If you have a problem with it, we don't have to do it. But it would be an improvement to the building. And certainly, they are leasing it. And they also said that if that other business doesn't lease the other 3,000 square feet, they want to go ahead and lease that too, with the lease rate that we'd set on the, another 700 a month, so. But this is something we don't have to do, the commission would rather not do it. As far as the bid on the apparatus bay, that was what the contractor that bid the low, low bid, put in with that stipulation, because he wasn't clear on where we were, what the placement was. Then we had the electric and what, something else that, that he didn't put in the bid.
It was just the, it was pad prep on that. In regards to the drive, though, the drive was actually shown on there as an ad alternate. That, that was not accepted. That, that part of the project wasn't accepted, when we accept, when the commission accepted the...
Well, and those exceptions were on his bid clearly defined.
Yeah, so...
I guess I would assume that an apparatus bay would have a drive as part of it. You wouldn't put it as an alternate and then we don't take it, then how are you gonna get the trucks through the dirt? You know, that, it wasn't brought out that it was an alternate at the time we approved it. And from the numbers, we, we heard 55,000 for concrete. That was a significant amount of money that, that goes on top of the 319,000.
I actually think that on the bid tab, it did indicate that there is, the alternate was on the bid tab for the, for the drive. That was presented.
Yeah, I guess I'm still saying, it had to be part of the project at some point.
It, it was on the bid documents. And as I indicated, it was an ad alternate, and it was shown on the bid tab. I can't, I can't state it any, any clearer there on that part of it.
And what I'm seeing, the 319, we intended, it sounded like the intent, we'd have a complete building. And at that point, it was time to make clear, we had no drive to get to the building, because it has to have a drive.
Okay, so where do we need to go with this?
Well, if it has to have a drive...
Well, we got the gravel drive.
We got the gravel in there.
But, you know, I was just bringing the point that we're doing projects and we keep getting add-ons that have not been presented as a complete package. And, and, you know, just, where's the money coming from each time? We can keep spending, but where are we depleting the money from? Is it economic development that we are using? Is it deferred maintenance? And how much money do we have left that we can keep doing? We've got to get a grip that when we negotiate a leased space or something, we do all of it at one time, so we know our, our extent of the, the costs. We can't keep going through the years spending until we're out.
I don't disagree with any of that, Leonard, although in this case, you know, the round top, I've never even set foot in the building, but I understand it was built during World War II. And if this, if this company wants to invest some money in it and they ask us to participate on a small scale, I, I think that may be a reasonable request on their part. So I don't, I'm not as concerned about this. I'm, I'm pleased to have Kelly Aerospace as a new tenant in one of our buildings and a new employer in town.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not against improving to make it nice, it's just, we've got to know the costs going in. We've got to know the costs that it's gonna be, and how it's gonna affect our budget. Now we're, we've got 9,000 here, but is it gonna be more? How do we know that we're, that this is it? How much is our, our design costs on top of the $9,400? Is there engineering? Is, you know, where are we gonna be? I'm just saying, we need to have a bottom line cost when we endeavor to take on a project to know what we're gonna do in the future. You know, there's no doubt.
Would this be considered a cost overrun? Which one?
Or poor planning.
Well, I don't, I don't remember doing a whole lot of projects where there's not some additional cost that maybe you don't know about.
Yeah, especially in a 70-year-old building.
Yeah.
You just don't, never know for sure what you'll run into, what they're gonna want to spend on the building.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I also know that, you know, one of the things we don't do is, we don't put contingency parts, budgets in some of our contracts. And maybe that's one way to protect ourselves, because it seems like we're always, well, we have projects where there's gonna be cost overrun because of unforeseen circumstances. Leonard, you've seen that in your work. And, well, I understand what you're saying. I also understand that, I think this is a cost of doing business. So what do you do about it? Okay, well, you know, you're right, we may not be able to do something else. And so then that's just, those are budget decisions that we'll have to make as we move forward. And we're capable of doing that. There may be some projects or something where we get, where it's overestimated, and we would be able to then recoup some of those costs that way. So I think, well, I'm like Gary, I'm, I'm happy Kelly Aerospace is here. I mean, I want to protect city equipment as well, like it's an important part of. And, because it costs you more if you don't protect city equipment. And so when you're talking about costs, you, you gotta look at the real costs and real issues that go with what you're spending.
And, and the contingency part is part of any project. And a lot of them that we do, we're adding contingency costs.
Well, we've had discussions here, though, that we don't want to do that because of the bonding it costs just contractors to do it.
Well, the contingency is in the plan, it's not in the contract. You keep the money in reserve, that you don't have the contract included, contractor included in his, because that's where you pay the bond. But, you know, this work at, for Kelly Aerospace, aerospace, they are a great company. It's good to have them here. But we've got to look at managing our money, that if we're gonna look at additional remodeling, then we needed to do something upfront and say, here's our total cost, so we know where the end is. And is this the end now? Usually, the unforeseen is for concealed damage. This is broadening the project, too. I know it's gonna make it more attractive for them, but for us as, as managing the money, we have to either put the contingency costs in our budget and acknowledge it from the start, because, you know, how can, how can, can accounting keep track of where we are if, if they're looking at, at all the other aspects of spending of the city and we keep adding things on? You know, there should be a limit on the project that we get to that, okay, yeah, this is good, but now we gotta wait till next year to, to do it, because we expended our budget there. We've got other things to do.
Actually, what happened is their, their owner, Mr. Kelly, came down. We had no idea that they would want to make those improvements, and we were gonna leave it just as is, because it, we thought it was suitable to them. He came down and looked at the situation, and he wanted to do the improvements. So he gave us that option.
Where do we go from here?
Well, those are reports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. Shall we move on, then? Those are reports? I'm sorry?
Move ahead.
Move ahead. All right. Okay. Let's see, I have, we're done with the H, right? Update on city projects. So aye says report on city board minutes. A couple board minutes, are there any questions or discussion on those?
Sounds like the tree board is getting active and...
Yeah. Yep. Got a couple fired up members there. Commission comments. Fred?
Everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Leonard?
No.
All right. You neither. Public concerns. I don't see any slips of paper up here.
We received one after the meeting started, so we cannot accept it.
All righty. Executive sessions. I would like...
I can comment on something else? Under the ordinance or the resolution that Gary read way back about the meeting standards, those needed to be turned in at the beginning of the meeting. I know that you commented on here that you thought we started early, but I know both Gary and I had 5:30 on our phones. And so when they're turned in after business is already going, we don't accept them any longer.
All right. I would like to call for an executive session for, just the three commissioners, for 20 minutes to discuss employee matters.
Non-elected personnel?
Non-elected personnel, sorry, yeah.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss non-elected personnel.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. 7:20. Are you gonna lead us through that discussion?
Sure.
Is that why you're standing there at the microphone?
I wanted to clarify, you know, we talked earlier about shutting off car washes and...
Right.
And that, and that's our first step. What we're gonna do tonight is we're putting together a notification that we're gonna take to all the businesses that we can get to, that are open. If they're not open, we're gonna post it. If they're not open, we're gonna post it that states that right now we're on conservation measures. If the situation changes in the morning, this looks like this is gonna extend further, then it's gonna become mandatory conservation and that will require them to be shutting their businesses down.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that so that, that everybody understands. If it warrants it's tomorrow, we will shut people's water off.
Yeah.
And we're gonna go ahead and give them notice that that might happen to, now, as soon as we can. So at least have that much advanced notice.
They're gonna have the fire and police go around tonight and make sure that everybody knows and understands.
So if I remember right, from 2007, making with the flood, there was, uh, I mean, there was, for lack of a term, a tier or protocol?
Yes.
For who, um, we're on whatever levels. And as I remember, it's like restaurants and...
Yes.
And that we're not targeting anybody. It's just...
Right, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, okay.
But, but if we get bad news tomorrow, everybody's gonna, pretty much everybody's gonna be targeted.
We're, we're gonna have to shut the industries down and, and the businesses down.
We, we, we hope that won't happen, but...
Right.
And if we get into a situation, it'll become life essential, use of water only. If we get into that situation where they have to truck water into us, that's, that's where we're going, so. Wanted, just wanted to clarify that. Alright?
And I will keep the commission posted.
So as far as posting the information, we can do it on website, we can do it on, you, reporter, through Chronicle, through, um, radio.
Radio, yeah.
I mean, we can use all of the means available. Yeah.
Okay, good.
That's about what we can do.
And I'll keep the commission posted and if something comes up that we have to have an emergency meeting, we'll ask you to have one if it's by phone or, or otherwise.
Okay.
I'll be around, I'll be around tomorrow, so. Alright.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the, uh, update. Alright, uh, move we adjourn?
Take it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thanks, everyone.